Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the meeting to order. Welcome to the September 11th City Council Meeting. And I'm going to ask our new student liaison, Tucker Morgan, welcome to lead us in the Pledge of Alesha. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America for what we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
He's here.
Councilmember Bagby? Absent. Mayor Paula?
Here. And please note for the record that Councilmember Bagby is off attending the League of California Cities Annual Conference and representing the city on a policy committee, so she's on the excused absence.
Yes.
Thank you.
And student liaison Tucker Morgan?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, before we start, I'd like for all of us to take a moment to recall the events of September 11th. On this date in 2001, beginning at about 8:45 a.m., a series of terrorist attacks destroyed the Twin Towers of the World Trade Center and severely damaged the Pentagon. Commercial airlines were hijacked and flown directly into the three buildings. On this day, we remember our fallen American heroes who tragically died as a result of those attacks. I ask all of you to observe a moment of silence at this time in their honor. Okay, I'd like to ask our city attorney to report out of closed session.
No reportable action was taken.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Bagby was also obviously excused from closed session, just for the record.
Very good. Thank you. Conflict of interest declaration. Does any council member have anything to declare? Okay, seeing none. Agenda review. Any changes or deletions from the regular agenda? Okay, seeing none. Move on to public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any items on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must come to the podium when advised and speak directly into the microphone. Each person will be limited to three minutes and may only speak once under public comment. Would anybody like to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda?
Yes, I would.
Please come up. Would you sign? There's a book up there if you would sign the book. State your name for the record.
Angela Cordova. I'd like to know what your plan is with the homeless living on the river destroying our river. I addressed this at the last meeting. I've been addressing it with Mr. Kelly. Nothing's been done. And I have current pictures from a drone. They have big fires. We have sex offenders down there. We have all the vegetations being cut out and ripped up. We've got stuff floating in the river. I understand that city limits is one thing, but it's still our town. Is anybody going to reach out to James Gore or do anything? Or just turn a blind eye?
Okay, are you?
Anybody?
Is that it? Finish your comments and then we'll...
No, I've asked for this to be put on the agenda. It still hasn't.
Okay.
I've sent numerous pictures to Mr. Kelly. Nothing's been resolved. I've even emailed you. I'm sure you've seen them. And Chief Stewart? No response from you, no response from him. The only person that communicates anything is Mr. Kelly. So when do you plan on putting it on the agenda?
Okay.
I have current photos as well, if you'd like to see those. We have sex offenders running downtown saying they're going to rape women. We have men pulling out their penises in front of children. We have a homeless man that's in a truck trying to run a local businessman off the road. We have Windsor Police dropping off homeless at the exit. All on camera. Can't turn a blind eye anymore. Our community's going to hell and nobody's doing anything about it.
Are you done?
I'm done.
Okay.
I just want to know when you plan on putting it on the agenda.
Thank you. This has been referred to a subcommittee. The subcommittee has actively been working on it. I'd encourage you to attend the subcommittee meetings. They're working with the county allies and the people that oversee the homeless situations within the different disciplines in the county. There's are very strong limitations of what the city can do, but we're working with it.
I'm pretty sure living on rivers is illegal.
We're taking... Excuse me. Please not interrupt. And it's really important to recognize that there are laws that we have to follow as a city and the police have to work within the law. And it's really critical. I do know you mentioned some things that are criminal in nature. I would hope that you have called the police, that you have, you know, filed a report so they could investigate the criminal things that you mentioned regarding nudity and different things that are being done that would be illegal. You mentioned sex offenders. I'm not clear where you get your information and who they are, but please communicate that with the police department.
They're registered. The police department knows.
Yeah.
Anybody in this room could pull it up.
Okay.
They're all clearly aware of that. They did arrest somebody about a week ago who was running down the boulevard saying he's going to rape women on Friday Night Live.
Okay, well, thank you for your comments. And that tells me the police are in the loop and they are actively investigating these things.
Are the police going down and checking for warrants?
So, thank you.
Run a name and check warrant?
Okay, your three minutes are up. Your three minutes are up. This is on the agenda for the Police, Finance, and Administration Subcommittee. I encourage you to continue the dialogue at that location.
And when is that going to be held?
When's the next meeting? Do you have that?
September the 27th.
And that'll be where?
At 2:00 at City Hall.
At City Hall. 2:00 in the afternoon when people work, right? That's a weekday?
Yep.
Yeah, so I got to take more time off work to attend these meetings, right?
Your time's up. We need to move on. Thank you.
Okay, so you're not going to address the issue, then?
The issue is being addressed.
It's not. You know what? You need to understand...
This isn't going to be a dialogue.
No, these people are behind my home. My home is in jeopardy of being caught on fire from illegal fires, okay? A bonfire I have on video. That's my home, my children. We don't have anything else. That's all we have. And nothing is being done. I have a video of the bonfire.
Then you get the video to the police department.
The fire department can't even get down that far on the river to stop it.
Would you please have a seat?
Would you please cover my home when it burns?
Ma'am. I understand this is really serious and I...
You don't understand because you haven't replied once to an email. Only Mr. Kelly has.
I'm not on the email team.
Not even Chief Stewart.
Okay.
Can you please understand that the city cannot... We can't have a discussion about this at the meeting? It's not on the agenda.
Then put it on the agenda.
That request has been heard.
As soon as we control...
The police... I would like to talk to you two offline about the restrictions.
You know, if you...
Okay.
You're disrupting the meeting.
This isn't on the agenda.
Okay, let's take a five-minute break.
We're going to take a recess.
We are taking a five-minute break, please. Okay, I'd like to reconvene the City Council Meeting. I just want to reassure the members of the public, and I know some council members have a brief comment, but the city does take homeless situation very serious and we do have a lot of resources that we're trying to put together to work on this, including looking at available funding that the state's releasing to help deal with this. But there are strict laws and it's very difficult. And a lot of the criminal elements that were described here, we take serious. And I know our police department, working with the sheriff's office, will look into this considerably. So, Councilmember Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also take this very seriously. It's not something, the homeless situation, that really anybody has an answer to. The tentacles go too deep and in different directions. But I would like to try and accommodate Angela and change the time of our meeting. Maybe we can check with her to see what time she gets home from work and we can tailor that meeting to meet her time needs. And I also think that if that type of situation is going on where somebody's running around naked and exposing himself, that I find it hard to believe if it's reported, the police would be all over that. So, yeah, that's it.
Thank you.
Actually, that's exactly what I was going to say, is that I have contacted her by email and said that I would be happy to meet with her after work or whenever, but I never got a response. And it is a discussion that we do have at the Finance Police Subcommittee, and we've had discussions about it. They just passed another law about two weeks ago.
Yeah.
Now that it is considered illegal to even try and stop anybody from sleeping outside. I'm not quite sure about a lot of the little parts of that, but it's becoming even more and more difficult from a police outlook on how to... How do you determine that? So, yeah, it's something that we are looking at very seriously on that committee. And in fact, we had Sean come to the last one just to speak on his cleanup efforts with Casey Carr and a few other people. So it isn't being just left...
No. And I just want to clarify, it's actually a Supreme Court decision.
It was.
So which even makes it more difficult.
Related to San Francisco and other cities. Thank you very much. I just wanted to join in and say that representing Cloverdale, as I do on a variety of boards with government agencies like the Sonoma County Transit Authority, Regional Climate Protection, Health Action Council, and Smart Homelessness, and the tremendous increase since the fires is on everybody's list. We are working on it in so many different ways. I just spent time, and I have a note on it on my council report, today, the meeting of the Cloverdale Health Action Chapter spoke about some of this, but we normally cover it then. I also... I have such sympathy for this, I really do, and I can understand her frustration. I don't shock easily. But I was coming from a meeting, in fact, an SCTA meeting, Sonoma County Transit Authority, Regional Climate Protection Authority Board Meeting that I chair, and I happened to come from downtown Santa Rosa and was getting on the freeway. The amount of homelessness in the entrance to the freeways is greater than I've seen in any city, including San Francisco, per capita. And it's just tremendous. I don't... It's so hard to deal with this because it's not that we're all not working each in our own way, but we don't have the money and we don't have the expertise, and nobody seems to know really what the solution is. But I do trust that we will be able to respond and our police... I believe we've been very good about it in the past.
Thank you. And since this is not on the agenda, we need to move on.
Yeah.
But this will be a discussion. I encourage everybody that has concerns to attend the next Police, Finance, Administration Subcommittee, because this is an important topic that needs to be... Would anybody else like to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda?
My name's Michelle Winterbottom, and I just wanted to know when the cannabis issue was coming back. It was supposed to be back within three months, and almost five. I know Gus Walter said that you had a brief discussion last meeting that said it was coming back to the last meeting in September, and I just wanted to make sure it was going to be scheduled.
Okay, thank you. We haven't set a date yet. It was going to come back... The way we left it, it was going to come back not before three months, but there was no set date set. I know the staff has been working on it, and once they get their... All the comments from the council set up, they'll be scheduled in a time to bring that back for a discussion.
So it's going to be scheduled for the next meeting, like you said, during the last meeting?
That's the target, unless somebody wants to speak up, and then we'll... It will be scheduled if staff is prepared. And maybe David, you might quickly...
Mayor, councilmembers, happy to provide an update to council. Staff is currently working on finalizing the comments we received back from council, and our plan is to present an overview of kind of the key issues that have been identified that we'd like the council to provide feedback and input on. And I think we are prepared at this point, unless something comes up to bring those back to council on September 25th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, Mary Ann.
Councilmember Walter.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Michelle's absolutely right. I think that the... I did make the comment that we were hoping to have it back on the 28th. You know, I've been thinking about this, and at some point, I don't know whether today's the day or the next council meeting, all council members are here, but I'm wondering if we should not consider moving this until after the first of the year. We have a potential to have three new council members sitting up here on the dais. Those three new council members will have the authority after the first of the year to make any changes that they may want to that ordinance. Are we just spinning our wheels by doing it now, only to have it undone down the road? Or shall we move forward with it with the current city council?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. This isn't on the agenda, and I...
Oh, okay.
I know it's about a future agenda item, but it's kind of leaning toward a discussion on something that's not agendized, so I encourage you guys to wrap it up and...
Well, thank you for that, City Attorney, but it is a valid point that we need to at least be... I need to get some direction as we put the agenda together. So maybe under future agenda, we can talk a little bit about whether we want to put this on now or not. So be thinking about that. Thank you.
There is later in the agenda, the agendized item, council direction on future agenda items.
Right.
So I think under that, I think council could give direction to staff.
Great. Thank you.
I can't say anything else, right? Is that what they tell me?
No. Great.
All right, I'll wait.
Okay, any other comments?
No comments.
All right. Would anybody else like to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda?
My name is Erin Gore. Can you hear me? I'm quite tall. My name is Erin Gore. I'm elected on the Healdsburg District Hospital Board. I'm also on the board for the Northern Sonoma County Healthcare Foundation. Relevant to open comments earlier, we just raised $1 million for mental health services for the wildfire recovery for here in Sonoma County. So really passionate about solving the mental health crisis. I am also the founder of a company called Garden Society, where it cannabis business, and we just took occupancy of the Ice House. We are a benefit corporation focused on mental health for women and women's wellness. And I'm here today to offer any of you council members or city staff a tour of our facility. It is not open to the public, so we need to do it on an appointment basis, but David Kelly has my contact information, and so I would welcome all of you to come into our facility, see our products, learn more about what we're trying to do with the mental health community that we're working with, and how we view cannabis can really solve the opiate epidemic and also really benefit our community in a positive way. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council, city staff, chief, Sean Bovee, Cloverdale. In respect to the homelessness, I wanted to kind of maybe change the mood a little. I'm here on behalf of the Clean River Alliance. Clean River Alliance is working to largely address trash on the river. However, there's a couple of us here in Cloverdale who have taken it just a little further. Unfortunately, a lot of the trash that's on the river is tied to our homeless situation. I wanted you to know as a council that there are members of the community that are actively engaging the homelessness and the situation down on the river. And I'd like you to know that, in my opinion, it's not all doom and gloom. You have folks down on that river who are longtime Cloverdale residents. Yes, it's very complex. There are a number of issues, mental health, substance abuse. However, I've come to find that our approach with them has been quite rewarding upon giving them garbage bags and asking for their help in cleaning up after themselves. I've yet to have anybody refuse. Yesterday, Casey Carr and I spent the day working the trash near the cemetery. Cemetery's been kind of a controversial little spot. A lot of folks walk there. Of course, that's where our cemetery is. So we've spent a considerable amount of time addressing the trash and homeless issue there. Yesterday, we were able to remove 2,000 pounds of trash that was all staged by the homeless. Casey and I just simply put the bags into the truck and drove them to the landfill. Those bags were collected and put together by our homeless population. I believe there are solutions, and I have some ideas. I'd really look forward to, if not an agendized item, perhaps a workshop. I've met with Ms. Cordova a number of times. I'm compassionate and sensitive to her situation. However, I believe there's a bit more to it. And I do firmly believe that there are some cost-effective measures. A recycling station here in Cloverdale. You'd be surprised if the majority of the trash is recyclable trash. Trash that would put, be it not much, a little bit of money in the homeless population's pocket and allow them the dignity of picking up after themselves. I'd like to see us have more dumpsters. I'd like to see us have a restroom. That issue, too, is substantial. I brought some flyers. On this Saturday, September the 15th, the Clean River Alliance is having a community-wide, from end to end, big event. They're looking for 400 volunteers to come out and spend part of the day cleaning up the river. I'd really like to see you guys there. I know this is going to be a community-wide effort. Casey and I aren't going to do it all by ourselves. I know law enforcement is actively engaged in doing their part. Boy, if I could see some council members down there that really thought, hey, I want to be a part of this, I think it could make a big difference. I really don't believe that there's not a solution. So if I could, I'd like to leave these with Ms. Moore.
Please do.
Essentially gives you the details, days, time, that sort of thing. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to the city. We have... The next item would be consent calendar. All items under consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the council unless a council member or a member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Would any council member like to pull an item? Yes.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to pull item number one for a very quick correction of a typo on page five.
Okay. Any other items? Would any member of the community like to pull any item? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. I'll entertain a motion to approve with the exception of item one.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we approve the consent calendar as submitted with the exclusion of item number one.
A second.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Walter, second by Councilmember Brigham. Any discussion on that? Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
And Tucker?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go to item number one.
One, page five. It happens, unfortunately, to be my city council report for August 15 through 23rd. The last item for Thursday, August 23rd, if you go along towards the end of that line. Unfortunately, I have no idea how this happened. Instead of Kiwanis Club, I must have... I typed Kiwanis Carter. No idea who Mr. Carter is, but I apologize to him, and I am changing this to club. Thank you. And I also appreciate the fact that the Revelry, the Kiwanis Club, and the Chamber of Commerce had a very nice mixer for all the businesses that belong.
Great. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Correction, so without any other discussion, entertain a motion to approve item number one, the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve item number one.
Second.
Okay, so motion by Councilmember Walter, second by Vice Mayor Russell. Any discussion on that?
No, sir.
Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
And Tucker?
Aye.
Great. Okay, so we have no communications, no public hearings, no new business, so we're under Subcommittee Items, Finance, Administration, and Police Subcommittee.
Did you... I beg your pardon, I thought you skipped an item. You did not.
Did I miss something?
No, you didn't.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, then we'll go on with item number six. Consideration and adoption of Resolution Number 064-2018, approving the maximum allowable solid waste composing and recycling rates under the Solid Waste Collection Franchise Agreement between the city and Redwood Empire Disposal Incorporated, and repealing the rate schedule adopted under Resolution Number 024-2017, our city manager.
Mayor, councilmembers, included in your dais is a PowerPoint presentation that was developed by R3 Consulting. That's our rate consultant that helps us with the review of proposed rate changes by Recology, who's the franchise solid waste hauler. If council's inclined to review the PowerPoint, we're happy to invite Kerry Baxter from R3. If you're otherwise are okay with just providing a... With myself providing a brief staff report, obviously with Kerry here to offer any... Or address any questions the council may have, I can certainly proceed without the PowerPoint. It's council's desire.
Yeah, so why don't we just go ahead and give the staff report, and then we'll see?
I have a question.
Right, when we get to that, yes.
Okay, so the item before you is a request by Recology to adjust solid waste rates that are charged to private, you know, residential customers and commercial customers within the city of Cloverdale. Under our franchise agreement, Recology... Or the franchise hauler, in this case, Recology, is... Has the opportunity to request annual rate adjustments. Those annual rate adjustments have to be based on a certain set of factors. Those factors are outlined in your staff report, which includes a collections component. The collections component gets to be adjusted annually based on what's similar to a consumer price indices, but in this case, it's specifically a refuse rate index, or RRI. That methodology is spelled out in the agenda report and also in the accompanying memo that is prepared by R3. In addition, the rate adjustment includes a disposal component. The disposal component is really a pass-through of fees that are charged by Sonoma County landfill to the hauler for disposing the waste at the Sonoma County landfill, and the franchise hauler is enabled to basically pass that through, that additional charge per ton of materials that are deposited at the landfill to our customers. In addition, under the settlement agreement that was adopted countywide, including by the city of Cloverdale, there now is a compostable materials processing fee that includes processing green waste. And in addition, there is the part of the rate calculation that includes the city's franchise fee component. Last but not least, included in this particular rate adjustment is a retroactive rate pass-through. Under the change that happened with the county settlement agreement, the tip fee was changed from July 1st to April 1st. And in order to take into account that adjustment, there would actually be... There would need to be two rate adjustments to occur, and what staff determined was that it was most appropriate to calculate that rate adjustment only once and do it on a retroactive basis rather than do two rate adjustments annually. So what you see before you is a resolution that would allow Recology to adjust the maximum rates for both residential carts, commercial carts, and there's a rate schedule that's included and attached to the resolution that would show the proposed new rates if council adopts the resolution before you. Really, that's a brief summary and overview. Obviously, Kerry's here today to ask... To address any technical questions that you may have. This, you know, it's a fairly complex and rigorous analysis that goes into these rate calculations, but this is allowed for under our franchise agreement with Recology.
Thank you. Questions from City Council? I know Vice Mayor Russell has a question.
Yes, I just have a very quick one, because will this be... This will be on our website as part of our meeting tonight, and people may take a look. In fact, I would encourage them to do so, so they learn more about these rates and how they're figured and what we're getting for it. But on page 14, I must confess, I was scratching my head. Can you refresh my memory on the various rate differences? There were increases in 2018 that included Healdsburg, Petaluma, Roanoke Park, Santa Rosa, and Windsor, as well as Cloverdale, obviously. And I, the first thing that caught my eye was Hillsburg, where we have rates that are significantly lower than ours. That, though, we're talking about cart sizes. We're not talking about extra services of some kind or something unusual. Can you explain how those are calculated and how they're figured and why, for example, for a twenty-gallon, Hillsburg pays eleven ninety-three as of nine-one-two thousand eighteen, and Cloverdale pays fifteen ninety-one? Or going all the way up to a ninety-six gallon, Hillsburg pays thirty-one forty-three and Cloverdale will be paying forty-five eighty-four? Thank you.
Mayor, council, I'd like to introduce Kerry Baxter. Kerry Baxter is with R3 Consulting. R3 Consulting is our consultant that we retain to help us with this rate review analysis. Just for reference, this chart is really for comparison purposes only.
That's what I'm doing.
It's intended to identify where Cloverdale's rates are relative to the other cities within Sonoma County. One of the issues with respect to solid waste rates is that they're largely based independently on those individual franchise agreements that were negotiated with those respective cities.
I gather.
And, and so therefore, depending on the level of services that are offered and/or required by the city in those franchise agreements often were the basis of those rates.
I understand that.
Subject to some public review process.
I understand it, thank you, city manager. But I would like to get a few examples of what we did and requested that was so far above what Hillsburg requested. And I just need to understand it, so when people ask me, I'll be able to explain it.
It would, like David just said, it's all based on the services that are being provided by your hauler. Each franchise agreement has something different in them. For Cloverdale, you, I would have to look closer at the agreement itself to see what services are different and how, I didn't sign those contracts.
I understand.
So, I mean, I can get more information on that for you.
I think we need that. I'd like to be sure that next time we negotiate the contract, we have a better understanding of what we're negotiating and why we're paying for it. Maybe we ask for services we don't really need. Or maybe we really need those services and my friends in Hillsburg need them too.
And we also have Fred from Recology here as well, so he might be able to answer that question.
So, Fred, would you come down, please, and sign the book there and introduce yourself? And then, maybe you can address that question.
My name is Fred Semler, I'm the general manager of Recology Sonoma Marin. I do have the comparisons, actually, I've prepared them before tonight, so I can speak to the differences.
That's great.
So, what you heard is not inaccurate. There are absolutely differences between contracts. And since we went through the assignment process, we essentially just adopted everything that was in place. Under a really equitable kind of system, there would be apples to apples on comparisons. Your services relative to Hillsburg are more or less very similar, piece by piece. Now, what generally happens when you're negotiating contracts is there are residential and commercial rates.
I understand that.
And so, when I take a comparison of Cloverdale's rates, and I did the most common service level, so it would be a twenty-gallon, thirty-two-gallon, sixty-four-gallon, and ninety-six-gallon. So, essentially, look at small, medium, large on a residential level. And then, at a commercial level, you measure in yards, okay? So, what happened essentially when you compare Hillsburg against Cloverdale is their services are approximately eleven point six percent on average cheaper. But if you go piece by piece, the residential components are thirty percent cheaper, whereas commercial ranges both cheaper and more expensive depending on the size. So, that's a complex answer, but when you look at residential versus commercial, is the larger your commercial generation is on garbage, the more expensive it is.
I understand that.
Well, I'm not sure everybody does. It's a pretty complex topic.
I think most people do. I think most people do, that I talk to at any rate, they're pretty smart. What I'm looking for is a breakdown of what we get for forty-five eighty-four as opposed to thirty-one forty-three. Because I, and you may not have an answer for that right now, but I would like a comparison of our contract.
You receive very similar services.
So that when it comes up again, we are better prepared to negotiate and to know what we really need.
Yeah, that would, that would be your determination. I also did some comparisons, so for Santa Rosa, since you're fifty-five percent cheaper.
On what?
On average, when doing a weighted average across all residential and commercial. So, there's, there's a lot of comparisons that we do, I'd be happy to provide some of those examples.
Yeah, break it down for me so that I really understand when you say you're cheaper. I understand why I'm cheaper if, because I need to explain this to people. Why, for example, on a ninety-six gallon, it's cheaper than Santa Rosa, which pays sixty-four seventy-seven, and we only pay forty-five eighty-four, which is great. But, on the other hand, I need to know why somebody, for example, is paying, again, thirty-one forty-three or whatever. In other words, we need to know what is the difference in service? Because it's not just size, obviously, it's service as well, is it not? Because they're all the same size.
Yes, but I think what we're, what I'm trying to, is that there's a range of services that are provided across many different types of businesses and households.
Okay, that's what we need to know. And I think we need to be able to explain it well.
Yeah.
So that if somebody takes a look at this and asks why, especially with a four-point-something increase, they need to understand what they're paying for.
I think, one, I understand that this, I would just urge, what I have a discussion very commonly with our customers, is essentially there are opportunities to reduce bills in almost every single household that I've had a discussion with and business by better utilizing recycling and compost services.
The smaller the can, the less money.
Those increases can be offset by diverting more materials.
Well, yeah, as I say again, these rates, in other words, the cart size, again, if I'm using, I use a twenty-gallon cart because I recycle, I do other things.
Absolutely.
But again, when somebody says to me, Carol, I use that, and I do all kinds of things, but I'm paying sixteen fifty-four and somebody else is paying nine dollars and eighty cents, but Hillsburg, which got a raise, is now paying only eleven ninety-three. They need to know, what is it that I ordered that I, how did twenty gallons make a difference between one city and another? I think that's what's unclear.
So, you know, I don't think we're going to be able to answer that.
No, we don't, but we need to have that information.
But I do know, I think, from what I'm hearing, all these contracts, not all of them, but are, were adopted the same year. So, different negotiations, different prices. For instance, if our, if our contract was up for renewal, the whole contract, these numbers may go up or down based on that conversation.
Yeah, but we need to know how we make them go down.
Vice Mayor, I think the shortest answer is that the commercial collection is offsetting the, the charge at the residential level. So, businesses are paying more in order to have the residential prices be lower in Hillsburg.
Okay, so, in Hillsburg, the businesses pay more in order to have the residential prices lower?
Whereas Cloverdale's businesses are paying less, and the residents are sharing a larger portion of that cost.
Okay, but we still, well, I can talk to you, we don't need to go through this, but we still have a difference per size of container.
They are not all the same.
Okay, that's the question.
Okay, thank you. Did you have a comment, city manager?
Mayor, council, I just want to reiterate that the proposed rate adjustments are specific to the city of Cloverdale's specific franchise agreement and the specific rate factors that are outlined in, in, in our franchise agreement. As part of this effort, we did not ask for a comprehensive evaluation of all the franchise agreements to determine the different increases. So, you know, in, in reality, the way the franchise's agreement is written, the, the council is somewhat obligated to adopt these rates because of the nature of the way these costs are imposed, in part on, on Recology. So, you know, I guess, it, council, staff's recommendation is that the council do adopt the resolution that's included in your packet tonight with the understanding that we can go back and we can work further with Recology to help identify what are those key services that are provided and what are some of the key service level differences that are reflected in the, in the individual rates? And maybe the appropriate place to, to have that be discussed is at the subcommittee level and then brought back to council.
That's what, that's what's at the back of my mind, yes. I'd like to see the subcommittee get prepared for the next negotiation. So, we really understand it, can explain it to people.
So, this contract that we have, the franchise agreements through, what, two thousand twenty-five-ish?
Two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah, so, it's a ways away, thank goodness. So, okay, so, any other questions from city council?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kerry, Fred, thank you for coming up to Cloverdale this evening. Just a couple of questions. And you might not know the answer to the first one. You know, the county does have, and granted, we're not in the county, but there's a dump problem. People dumping couches alongside the roadsides out in the county. Has that improved any, or do you have any inkling on, on what's happening there?
Our mattresses, that's another one.
Yes. So, I actually have been here since December twenty-third, when we went through the assignment process. I have not seen or heard a lot about illegal dumping in the county or in the cities, though I do know it does exist. The county, as well as many jurisdictions, have bulky item cleanups. We donate to community cleanups as well to address this. But I have not seen a surge in, in essentially complaints that have made its way through our office. So, I believe that each of the communities are making an effective effort to try and curb that.
Okay. And then, I know we currently have, I believe it's two curbside cleanups a year, and they're well-posted.
Yes.
So, my concern is about some of the folks in town that don't have the wherewithal to dispose of their mattresses or their refrigerators, bring them down to the landfill, pay the extra fee. Is it possible, and I know we'll be negotiating this, but do you do with any other city now, where you put the big green dumpsters at a certain location and folks could dump their refrigerators and their other big bulky items, mattresses, and not have to pay an extra charge for that?
That is certainly something that, that we can talk about.
Do you have it now in any other contracts?
Do we have it now? We, we do have, we do have community cleanups, and this would be the difference, I'll go back to your point about the price differences, in some, some communities, those additional services have been negotiated. And the cost, because we, we do not receive free disposal, we pay living wages for our employees, we essentially have to ultimately bear the cost in one way or another. And so, in most contracts, the cost is then distributed across the rate base.
You know, that's something, just to pencil, put a note in file, because I think the next time the contract comes before us for negotiation, that's something we should talk about.
We certainly could amend as well if that is a priority that you want to address immediately.
Well, that's something we could talk at, on a subcommittee level and bring it back to the council. And then, lastly, I just think, what I'm looking for basically is something like the Christmas tree cleanup that we do.
Sure.
You know, the two big dumpsters down on the citrus fair, and within a couple days, they're all gone. So, just something like that, a couple days down at the citrus fair, have the big dumpsters, and folks can just get rid of their stuff and not be financially burdened, because some of them can't afford to dispose of them.
We should continue this discussion. We are donating a significant amount of services to both the downtown corridor as well as the citrus fair. So, this, this may be an issue that we're already participating in, but I'm, I'm happy to work with the city manager and flesh this out.
Okay, thank you.
If I might just say a very quick comment.
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I just want to say, you have a very good customer service. I don't know the name of the person who took a request, but we had a problem with an old small cart that we have that's coming apart, and we got a new one pronto. And I really appreciate that, because I know how complicated these things can be when you have sixteen thousand people calling you complaining. But you did a very good job.
Thank you.
So, I just wanted to thank you.
I will pass that compliment along. It's, we, you're paying for the service. I think you deserve that kind of response.
So do I, and I appreciate it. You don't always get it.
So, and with that, I also like to thank you and Recology for supporting the Boys and Girls Club in that donation for the Cloverdale Club. Thank you so much for that.
Absolutely.
So, unless council has any other questions, I'd like to open this up for public input. So, if you could just stay close, just in case there's a question? Yes, please, yes.
My name is Long. Thank you for having me, Epo Lenny Bovee. Since Recology is here and they talk about amending the contract, I don't know, I would just like to suggest and plan to see that we think about bringing back a recycle center, like Sean said before. I think that might be, overall, help a lot of parts of our community. So, that's it, thank you.
Thank you, great, great suggestion. Hopefully, we're capturing all these ideas and to discuss.
Mayor, and council, if I can, just on that specific comment, the, the previous recycle centers were not operated by the franchise hauler. They were operated by a third-party, independent company. That, that company, because of the financial economics associated with, and the regulatory environment around recyclables, chose of their own accord to kind of close up operations. And, and we recognize that it did have an impact in the community on, on, you know, as I think Mr. Bovee indicated earlier, you know, recyclables that might otherwise, that otherwise end up in the trash or not in, in a, in an area that they shouldn't be.
But maybe you could, again, put this on that agenda so you could have a dialogue, see if there's other options and other ways to maybe help resolve something like that. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public input session. We have a resolution here?
I'll introduce the resolution by title only, Mr. Mayor. City of Cloverdale City Council Resolution Number 064-2018. Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale approving maximum allowable solid waste composting and recycling rates and repealing rate schedules adopted under Resolution Number 084-2017.
I'll second, Mr. Mayor.
Resolution introduced by Vice Mayor Russell, second by Councilmember Walter. Any discussion on the, okay? Get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye.
And Tucker.
Aye.
Okay, thank you both, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to subcommittee reports. We have the airport, and our chair is not here, so we'll go to Vice Mayor Russell. He's on the airport.
Well, thank you very much. Our next meeting will be October second at eight AM in the city hall.
Thank you. Finance, Administration, and Police Chair is Councilmember Brigham.
We covered, the two biggest items that we discussed were the homeless issue and the uptick in our garbage disposal rates. And, did you want to add anything?
No. I think, I think you'd do that nicely.
And we've covered that pretty, pretty much now. So, our next meeting is September the twenty-seventh at two PM at City Hall, unless we move it to accommodate Ms. Cordova.
Now, are you going to take the point on contacting her, or would you like me to?
Go ahead, I didn't get any response when I tried. I tried twice to contact her, and I verbally said I would meet with her, but I got no response, so.
Okay, thank you. So, if, I'd encourage any member of the public or maybe watching this to do check the time on the website. Guess it's currently scheduled for September twenty-seventh at two PM, but that time may change. So, please pay attention to that time. Okay, planning and community development, we have, our chair is not here, so Councilmember Brigham.
Next meeting is October the sixteenth, four o'clock.
Public Works Chair is our Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next meeting is September twenty-fifth at ten thirty AM at City Hall.
Thank you. Joint City Fire District, that's mine, and our next meeting is October eighth. It's at five thirty, and it's at the Fire District Headquarters. And the city, the Joint City School District, our next meeting is September seventeenth. That meeting has actually been canceled. We're going to be rescheduling another date, but so is to be determined. Okay, let's move on to council reports. I'm going to ask our student liaison, Tucker, to start us off.
For council reports? So, general?
Would you please speak into the microphone?
Sorry, sorry. So, for going on at my school or school district, one thing I would like to mention real quick is we have seven new teachers this year. So, that's quite a big change that a lot of us that have been going there since freshman year are trying to get used to. And the fact that our new principal, Mr. Meredith, who came in fact last year, he's starting to, like, meld into the whole group, the Society of Cloverdale High School. So, that's exciting, and there's a lot of new clubs doing work. And I know one fact is the Interact Club is in fact participating in the river cleanup on Saturday, so that's big news, and I hope they show up and go clean up. And I know, I like running along the river, and it's nice and it's refreshing, so. And another thing is our football team. Not to mention, we're doing pretty good. We got a new coach, Alexander, he's athletic director. New social studies teacher for Mr. Gasno, who just retired last year. And... And, yeah, that's general. If you have any other questions, concerns, make sure I could answer them, so.
Well, thank you for that report, and no questions or concerns, but thank you for being here. Okay, we have three council reports that are in the packet. Does anybody want to expand on anything, or?
Just want to, on one, Mr. Mayor, if I might. Due to a glitch, I was not able to get the attachments I promised to you on the report. I have two attachments. One is a quarterly impact report from the Health Action Council, and has some very, very good information about what we're doing there, which relates directly, of course, to our wonderful forming chapter we're about to submit very soon, I think next month, our request to become a real formal recognized chapter, and that will put us in line for all kinds of goodies. The other thing that interests me greatly is that as Chair of S C T A, I was pleased that the board voted unanimously against Proposition 6, which would do away with Senate Bill 1 having to do with taxes. And so, the staff at S C T A prepared a fact sheet for us, and actually, they did one for each of the jurisdictions, as I point out in my report. This is called Transportation Solutions in the City of Cloverdale Infrastructure Investments Funded by Senate Bill 1, SB 1, and Measure M. And if you take a look at it, I think it would give some very good answers to questions that voters will have. And I'll try to get that to Linda tomorrow so we can duplicate them and get them out to you. Thank you.
And could we maybe get that on the website as well, that flyer?
It's probably, I'm not sure if it's on the S C T A website per se, because it was for the board, but it might very well be by now. I hope so. And each jurisdiction has their own, so it's really cool.
That's good information.
It'd be good to get our Cloverdales on there for our residents to be aware of that.
Mayor, I can post that to our website. I have a copy of it, so.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's great.
Anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, so we'll move on. Any legislative report? None? We'll move on. City Manager Report?
Your report's mayor.
Okay. City Attorney Report?
Nope.
Okay. Council Directional Future Item.
Now?
Now.
Now, go for it.
So, you know, as I was stating earlier, it's possible we could have three new council members sitting up here on the dais the first of the year, and at some point, I'd like to poll the current city council to see if they want to take up the cannabis issue now, or if they want to let the three new council members weigh in on that after the first of the year.
So, you want to do a poll right now?
And I don't think we can, because it's not the agenda. Wouldn't you pay any attention when it got yelled at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay. So, why don't you do this, just forward your comments to our city manager, and then him and I, when we do the agenda review, we'll discuss those and decide whether we want to move forward to agenda this or not.
Okay. Give me the comments on what we would like to see different.
Well, Councilmember Walter raises some good points. You know, it's a lot of work for staff and our attorneys to put this all together, to get direction from a council that will be changing at the first of the year, conceivably have a new majority that may want to revisit the entire process. They're going to need the background, be brought up to speed, and it may change. So, it's going to generate a lot of work and a lot of cost, potentially twice. Would it make sense to maybe just, when the new council's seated, bring in the background? I think that's the question that the council. So, we don't need to discuss it. It's something to think about, and we'll take it from there. City Attorney, you're grabbing the mic, you're biting your tongue?
I would encourage, typically with future agenda items, if there's a consensus of the council during that discussion to put something on the agenda, we put it on the agenda. If there's not a consensus, then we don't put it on the agenda. But I would not encourage everyone to email, you know, I don't want to have a de facto vote on something by the council outside of a meeting.
Well, the question was, do we want it on the agenda?
Right.
That was, they want to think about.
And it might be something the public wants to chime in on as well, so I would simply encourage the council to just play it safe and put something on the agenda to have it discussed. It seems a little, it might seem a little overkill to have an agenda item on whether to have an agenda item, but it's a big issue in the community, and I would hate to cut the public out of the process.
No, that makes sense. Thank you. So, we'll put it on the agenda for discussion.
I think we have.
Okay. Well, she's going to have an opportunity to discuss it, and next meeting is going to be on the agenda for discussion.
I just wanted to recognize that we had.
No, so we'll have an opportunity.
Do we have to poll it now?
No.
She can talk right now if she wants to.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure we're all clear on what we're doing.
Yeah, she can make a comment.
So, you want to address the city council, please?
Epele N'bove, on future agenda items, I would really like to encourage that you consider speaking about it before, sooner than later. A lot of us, there's, it's a major conversation happening in the community. We want answers. We want answers before another cannabis business is being permitted. We want to make sure that that is, are you bringing back the ordinance? Are you bringing back the RFP process? There's a lot of clarity that we would like to know about. So, it going on the agenda so public can come and discuss is very important. I think if you don't, a lot of people are going to have a lot of things to say, and it would just be better to give everyone an opportunity to say it in public.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So, could it be on the agenda for discussion?
Well, no, we can, right now, go poll the council whether or not we want to do it.
Yes. I just haven't heard a consensus yet, so if there's three of you now that say, yes, let's put it on a future agenda, then.
For action.
For, for an item discussion.
For discussion.
Yeah. Then we'll move ahead, like we normally do with future agenda items, but I heard a sort of a split, and I didn't want to encourage a vote happening outside of.
This is really getting complicated. You know that.
It's not really very complicated.
So, basically, there's a proposal for a future agenda item to have the cannabis ordinance come back and give a, the plan by staff was to give a general overview on the major issues that have been brought up and the things to, to get feedback on from council, not go through the nitty-gritty or make any changes, just get general feedback. That was the plan of staff. If the council wants to hear that on the 25th, and three of you, the consensus of you say yes, we'll put it on the agenda. That's how we typically do future agenda items, right?
That's correct.
If not, then we would hold off, and I, that's when I was recommending having a formal, more, a discussion about whether.
Yeah, what do we want to do? Yeah, that, I think that makes sense. I mean, I want to have a discussion about and hear from the public about, do we make a move now, or do we pass it on to the three people who win the election? And I think that's viable.
We've made people wait forever on this issue. Let's just talk about it. What's the problem with talking about what everybody in town is talking about now?
That's the point, yeah.
So, let's, let the public speak.
Let's talk about it, yeah.
Let us speak.
Yeah.
Let's all speak to this issue in an honest and forward motion. I say, I would like to say that I would like to personally see this discussed openly, publicly.
Yes.
At the next council meeting, finally.
Yes, I think that's how I feel about it. Let's talk about it, because I think your point, if I may paraphrase it, is well taken in that I get one idea over here, and I've got one conclusion over here, and the record shows me something else, and I'm going to go to YouTube, I get something else. So, I need, we need to sit down and say, where are we right now?
Well, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Just for clarification, until the city council weighs in on that ordinance and gives it its blessing again, there'll be no permits issued. Okay, you need to know that.
That's not true.
That's, I'm sorry, that's not the case.
I wish it was the case, but it is not.
No.
I thought we said that we weren't going to issue any permits. We were going to put the whole ordinance on hold until we had a chance to review it.
The RFP process or any more dispensary permit applications is on hold. We currently have an operating ordinance where other non-dispensary businesses can apply for and receive permits.
And it's driving the public crazy, this confusion.
It's very confusing.
We need to take responsibility here.
The question right now is, does, is there, there's two council members who are in favor of having this on the 25th? Is there a third?
Well, let me just say this. We'll get it on the agenda for September 28th, and, but you and I need to meet before that. I want to make sure that staff is prepared. I have not. That was the direction I asked when we met last time. I want to make sure that you've done the research, there's new laws. We're going to go through the whole process.
Okay.
So, I want to make sure that you're prepared for that, so we're not over here spinning our wheels. So, is that?
That's fine. I just want to make sure that the three possible new candidates know that they're not going to get, wait, get to weigh in on this, other than the public session that we do. And I just thought it would be nice of seeing how they're going to live with it for four years, they can weigh in on it.
Mayor, council, if I can, just on that, on that specific issue, what, as City Attorney Cook indicated, staff's plan really is to come back, and while we weren't planning to agenda this as a workshop, but really to have a discussion with council about some of the specific items within the ordinance to get your feedback and direction, whether you wanted to keep them as is, make changes and updates, or, you know, give us policy direction to make specific revisions. And that's really what we wanted to do with this council, was just, just really get your feedback on some of those key issues that we've identified. The council could very well say, you know what, after reviewing and discussing it, we're going to keep the ordinance absolutely as is and not make any changes. Now, with that said, I think there have been some changes in the emergency regulations. Obviously, council knows there's been a special event planned that we haven't, that's not addressed in the ordinance. So, there are some things that I think from staff's perspective, we're going to recommend that the council give us direction on that would necessitate changes to the ordinance, but really, that's up to the council to decide from a policy perspective whether you want to do that or not. Ultimately, depending on the council's feedback, if we conduct that discussion, staff would actually have to make those revisions to the ordinance.
Come back.
And come back. It's more than likely, given the process, remember that the ordinance is part now of your zoning ordinance, Title 18 of the municipal code. As I think we see it, that has to go through the process of planning commission review, depending on if they're, what the nature of the changes may require further environmental review. You know, that may be relatively minor process, but, you know, has to kind of, has to go through that proper process of review and ultimately back to council through a public hearing process. So, even though we could start the process now of getting that critical feedback, more than likely, the ultimate adoption, assuming that those changes are made and there's acceptance of that, would be before a new council.
Before?
Or would be with a new council.
Well, then, they'll make the changes that they want at that point.
So, there are arguments, I think, as the mayor indicated, to kind of wait, you know, wait to the new council's on board so they could really give that policy direction early on, but there's also support and desire to bring back those discussion items with this council who has the background, the history, and the experience in working with the ordinance in its current form, so that we, you know, really get your feedback based on, you know, what we've learned in going through, that, you know, what we think has been a pretty complicated, convoluted process. So, there's pros and cons to both, and, you know, staff, we can, we're flexible, we can work either way, you know, but our goal would be, if council directs, to be able to bring forward as a discussion some of those key issues for your feedback at the next meeting.
In fact, in fact, as somebody who, you know, ran for office or somebody who never was in office before, and there were some complicated issues, I would have appreciated that, because I'm getting an update, I'm getting something, you know, that's complicated, made perhaps more clear than it would be otherwise, and I get to ask a question or two, which is not bad for a candidate.
Yeah.
She's up with a wink.
I would like to make one more comment.
You may.
I think that even Gus is confused, and I think the public is very confused about what the, really, the rules and regs. There's many people out there that don't realize that they can go in there and apply for a permit of any type right now, because there's been things like this put out there, because I was under the impression from discussions that we were holding off, until I went to City Hall and was talking, and I realized, no, they are accepting applications for other things. But the public is equally confused, and it's not really, I think, fair to just hold off any discussion when the candidates are going to be sitting out here and they're willing, you know, they can come and ask questions and get involved in the discussion, because we can't keep putting these business people off month after month after month after month.
Well, you know, in fairness, I'll play the other side of it. I don't see any urgency personally. I mean, I don't see any urgency, and I feel that, I look at the amount of work that's involved with our city manager's office and the cost and the extra work for our city attorney, because we could go down a road and change distances and change zoning, and those are going to be the big conversation piece, and that can be rechanged again, and that would have to go back and be, so I don't, I mean, I kind of agree. I'm open to either way, but I agree with Councilmember Walter. I think sometimes we're kind of trying to get ahead of something that can all unravel and be changed again in the first part of the year. So, it seems like we're kind of spinning our wheels.
But it won't be probably put in place before the new people are on.
But the work would have to be redone if we direct.
You aren't going to change this very much. It took two years to get where we are now, actually, almost three years now. And we were kind of ahead of the curve. Now, we're very far behind the curve. And there's people in the community that keep calling me and saying, when can I make an application? I've been sitting on this property for almost a year, paying. These are business people that are trying to settle in this town and create a business, and they're being put under before they can even begin because they are on hold. And I don't think that's fair to do to any business person. Well, they can apply now, we know that.
They're not dispensary, yeah.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'm fine with it coming back on the 28th. David, you've got my changes that I want to see, so let's bring it back on the 28th.
So, we'll talk on that.
Yes, please. You know what? If nothing else, this will also give us an opportunity to find out where we are.
Yes.
Time has gone by. Things have happened. Maybe they're good, maybe they're not good. We need to know, okay, what was the result of what we did? Did we do it right? Did we do it wrong? That's going to help the new people as well, I think. So, yeah, let's sit down and talk about it.
So, that one item, any other items that we want to talk about? Nope. So, cannabis would be the big one. All right.[1785.23]